Okay, you guys ready?
I'm ready.
That's exactly right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regular city council meeting on Monday, December 18th, 2017, in the Christmas season, and we'll all do well to remember that. Would all of like-minded, please join me in a flag ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call is here. Blessings upon us all. Okay, this evening because we have with us our new council member who, in spite of the months it's taken to getting here, we still won't seating until mid-January, but I wanted to introduce the new councillor to the group, Chris Mullen. Sergeant Diane Wetzel, our almost, well, she's super, super police tonight. Dan Fleishman, our planning director. Lance Ludwig, our public works officer. Our librarian.
Top Lance, top Lance.
Our librarian, Jenna, our librarian. Councillor Priscilla, Priscilla.
Gladwell.
Gladwell, I knew that. That was a test for me. Councillor, Brian. Jesus. I can't do names correctly. Myself, Councillor Joe Uselman. Councillor.
Go ahead.
That's a dirty trick.
Hank, you better know me.
I do. Anyway, the last councillor down on the end there, I'm terrible on names tonight. Mark Cronquist, one of our legal councils, our land use attorney, Mr. Wallace Lee, our city manager, Keith Campbell, and the lovely and talented city recorder.
Hold up your name. Turn your page, you can see him.
It's my name, it's not my name.
Alyssa Angelo.
Thank you.
Pretty good, yeah? Not good, but fair. Chris, welcome, and we'll see.
You have more of this to look forward to, Chris?
Very exciting.
No, it isn't really, but it's what passes for us doing.
It's a Monday night escape, come on.
Yeah, okay. And of course Alyssa will be in touch as we go through that indoctrination period. We have to do a bunch of old rituals. We usually wait for a full moon to do those before you're properly seated, but we'll get all that done. And let's see, we don't have a meeting the first in January, it's about the 17th or 18th, isn't it?
We're cancelling the 16th, right?
Sometime in January.
Mr. Mayor, we moved to cancel the meeting on the 2nd, don't we?
Yeah, we took care of that.
Yeah.
Decided to have New Year's instead of a council meeting.
That's fine with me.
Okay, all right. Are there any additions to the agenda? Any declaration of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Okay. Presentation, comments from the public?
Just a minute, let's go back again. Is the teen centers on the thing tonight? So just wanted to let you know that when the teen center first was being discussed, I actually helped gather a group of people together to discuss that, however, have not been in any way, shape, or form part of the planning of that since that original date. So I don't feel that, just wanted to disclose that, but I don't feel like I have any part of it.
Did you want, you didn't fill out an informal. Okay, anyway, Heidi Shamblin, did you want to say something now, or there's another opportunity later in the meeting? Down the road, okay. Let's see, anyone else need to say something to the council that's not on the agenda tonight? This is a time, all right? If not, let's go on. Consent agenda for December 4th, city council minutes.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
And resolution number 971, extension of Wade Brown Band franchise agreement. And I thought I heard a motion down the floor.
I move, we accept the consent agenda as written.
Okay, a motion and.
I second.
A motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, let's go on to page two. Oh boy, business from the mayor. Instead of dragging along like the cow's tail, we get to do this up front. This is great. We've got appointments and reappointments to various committees, boards, and commissions. Appointments Patrick Mulligan to the Parks and Recreation Board and Brent Walker to the Budget Committee, are either of those folks here tonight. Mr. Mulligan, you're not Brent Walker, because I know him, well, welcome and thank you. And reappointments, Sherry Peckfelder to the Parks and Recreation Board, Palma Pugsley to the Park and Recreation Board. Hmm, I thought that was Pam, but anyway. And Alan Kingsley to the Budget Committee and Dixie Ellard to the Planning Commission. Is Dixie here tonight? You're not Dixie, I know you.
No.
Okay, nice try. Could we have some, I hope affirmation to those folks as appointments and reappointments?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
And a motion and a second to appoint two people to Parks and Recreation and Budget Committee, and then reappointments, four folks to that. So I'll ask for a vote on that. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose, none? Oppose, no, none. There are no public hearings tonight. Unfinished business, an order of approval for minor modification application, and I'm going to guess that that is, let's see. Mr. Fleishman, would you like to start the ball rolling on this one?
Just, Hank?
Yes.
So that was Pam that just left, right? And who is the other person who is here that was appointed tonight?
Right there, that gentleman right there. That's Matt Mulligan.
Matt Mulligan.
Patrick.
Patrick Mulligan. Okay, in the future, I'd really like to actually hear people maybe say why that they want to be part of what we are, so that when they show up, that they're just not here for a second and then leave, so I kind of get to know who they are and what their face looks like, and so I can, if I ran into them and safely, I'd know who they were. Oh, I'm sorry, in Roths, I mean, so I know who they were.
Did you look through the written applications?
Yes.
You did, so you saw.
Yes, I just don't know who that is when I look through the written application. Does it have a picture of them, so?
Okay. Next time we'll put in pictures. No, it's good, it's all right.
I just think if they take time to actually show up, it would be nice to.
There he is, yeah.
Have them.
Chris, thanks for being here.
Have them address us, so.
That's an active group, and they meet on, what is it, the 2nd?
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
Every month, that's correct.
Eighty right after the council.
6:30, the library.
6:30 at the library.
Well, he'll get all that information. Okay. Good point.
Welcome aboard, thank you for coming.
Okay, so, Mr. Fleishman, back to you. If you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the issue before you tonight is the consideration of a revised order of conditional approval on the application of Sunshine Coffee for site plan approval of the property at the southwest corner of North Third, New and Whitney Street. You held a public hearing on this issue at your last meeting. You closed the public hearing, which closed the record. You approved the application and directed staff to revise the draft order to better reflect the findings and to reflect the testimony that was presented at the public hearing. So you have before you a revised draft order. It has substantially more findings of fact in it, discussion of how the application came to be, the various issues that were raised in testimony and response to them, and findings regarding the appropriate criteria. The conditions of approval in the revised draft order are the same as were in the draft order that was presented to the council two weeks ago and approved by you. So there is no change in the conditions of approval from what you saw and voted on at your last meeting. If you have any questions about the specifics of the draft order, I will do my best to answer them, otherwise you've got the staff recommendation for approval of the revised order.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Councillors, questions for Dan, or about the draft order?
Nothing has changed.
Go ahead, please.
Nothing has changed.
Okay, all right. The draft order, quite extensive. Does it create any discussion on anyone's part?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't have a discussion, I just wanted to give my commentary on the call-up process. At the end of the day, this comes to a matter of interpretation, and the animus that was created by this issue, in my mind, was uncalled for, suspected best. But if you look at the review process and the call-up, look what the result was of the call-up. The planner changed the requirement for my concern, which was the paving of the facility, which now has to be done in May of next year, whereas previous to that, it was just given five years down the road. So from a call-up standpoint, that's what the process of call-up is. It's for us to put it in front of the council and ask any questions or give it another look, just to make sure that everything's in order. And in this particular case, I think it fit the bill, and I think the outcome of it is what you guys have here today. Having said that, I really value what the land use attorney has to say to us in regards to these matters, and I can't summarily dismiss his advice to us regarding Luba, should this be appealed. So for that, I appreciate Heidi's willingness to make all the modifications in the second approval and do what she has to do to run her business, but I still have to err on the side of caution when our land use attorney tells us that, should this go to Luba, we're going to have a challenge before our hands. And if it does go to Luba, that will be the true sense of whether it's vindicated, the planner's vindicated, or rebuked. And that's really the only way it's going to come down to what we have to do to continue. So that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Thoughts or comments? We're offered two options here, or two choices, to either approve the revised draft order as presented, or to approve the revised draft order with modifications. And so, that is it. And again, Heidi, it's probably not part of the procedure, but it's not a formal hearing. You can wait till the end of the meeting to jump in on this, but you had a green letter. Do you want to say something to the council at this point before they do so? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it's appropriate. Your record is closed, you're into deliberations, and there isn't the ability unless you were to have a motion to reopen the hearing.
You can't, just another informal.
No, you can't, sorry.
Heidi, I'm sorry, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve it as adjusted by the planning commission and staff, and applaud Dan for his hard work.
Okay, now which one?
As, no modifications.
Oh, no, okay, so approve the draft order as presented. A motion?
I move.
Okay, is there a second? Joe?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Priscilla, thank you. A motion and a second to approve the draft order as presented. I move the city council approve the revised draft order for the application of Heidi Shamblin, land use file number 9-09/17 as presented. Unless there's other discussion right now, I'm going to ask Alyssa to poll the council.
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
Councillor Cronquist.
Aye.
Councillor Gladwell.
Yes.
Councillor Uselman.
Yeah, aye.
Councillor Quigley.
No.
Motion passes three to one.
Three to one, okay. All right, we're good. Let's move along. Under new business, selection of a city attorney. Mr. Lee, thank you for being here tonight. I didn't mess your name up, which is kind of a miracle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, upon the passing of our longtime city attorney, David Roten, staff went into a pretty long and involved process beginning back in September to develop a request for proposals. We got it out on September 25th, I believe, with a closing date of October 30th of this year. The city received two responses. Those responses were circulated among staff, all of the council members got those. Evaluations were made of those proposals, and we held extensive interviews with the two candidates in mid-November. We then had two executive sessions to discuss the two applicants and evaluate the proposals. The process tonight will be pursuant to the charter, section 35, and I would note that that section wasn't changed in the new charter, so the appointment of city attorney is the same as it always has been. The process is the mayor appoints, followed by the consent of the council, like we did at the last meeting. The two candidates that you have before you for selection is the Local Government Law Group and State in Law. Local Government Law Group is a firm in Eugene. It has six lawyers and then two of council lawyers, which are, they're not really part of the firm, but they work with the firm on particular matters, and they are under the same letterhead as the firm. They are a full-service city attorney firm. That being said, as we have operated under the last 25 years or so that I've been involved, the way the city is operated is with a primary city attorney and then a series of expert lawyers in particular fields who support the city attorney. What this firm is offering is a full service, so that you have all of the land use, everything but bond counsel, they don't have bond counsel, but they have all the other labor, employment, HR, land use, and that sort of thing. They represent 80 local governments, most of which are cities. The closest in size they represent is the City of Independence, or the closest in proximity, I guess, is the City of Independence. The closest in size, I think, is Florence that they represent. The other firm that put a response in is State in Law, which is Jennifer Nagel's firm. It's a longtime State in firm. Jennifer is the single lawyer in that firm, and she has one full-time equivalent staff. Her proposal is to maintain the status quo, where she would take over David's role and the rest of us that do outside council stuff would continue to help support the city in our various fields of expertise. I have compared, I think there are 10 issues that evolved through the interviews and our executive session discussions that were of interest or concern of the council, and the first one is hourly rate. The LGLG group is $195 an hour, State in Law is $225. Typically, there is a half-time travel expense, which wouldn't be all that much for State in Law, but would be something for the Eugene firm. It's about an hour and a half drive each way for there to come to the council. Eugene firm also charges in addition to time the IRS mileage rate, which is 53.5 cents per mile, and I think that equates to about $65 or something in addition to time that they would have. The specialty rate from LGLG is $250 an hour, and it wouldn't change with State in Law because we already have agreements in place with outside council there. And outside council rates are pretty comparable. Staff time hourly rate is $85 for LGLG and $100 for State in Law. The designated attorney proposed by LGLG is Rebecca Dormand. She's a young lawyer, seven years experience, and I think less than a year with this firm. Jennifer has 18 years of experience. One of the things touted by LGLG was that because they only serve cities and local governments, they develop manuals and standardized contracts and packets of materials that they provide to their clients at a flat rate, which typically is relatively low. And Jennifer doesn't have that in place because she doesn't represent cities at this point. Attendance at city council, LGLG was pretty clear that they would come to city council if requested, but didn't think that they needed to be here at each one of the meetings. And Jennifer has indicated, because of her proximity, she could be here anytime you needed her. One of the things that we deviated from the request for proposal, request for proposal called for a four-year contract, if you remember, and my advice to you was that you want to be able to fire your lawyer whenever you want, you don't want to have to hang around or deal with severance packages and that sort of thing. And so we've looked at changing the term of the service contract to be an at-will, and I talked to both firms, and that is acceptable to both firms. The experience representing cities, LGLG, of course, says that's what they do, they represent cities and cities only, they don't represent any private clients whatsoever. Jennifer has not represented a city, but she has several special districts and utilities, especially in the telecom area that she represents. And the last item was the experience and familiarity with the city, and of course LGLG has none, and Jennifer has a lifetime of contact with the city. There were a number of questions and concerns on these topics that we had during various discussions, and the way the process will work is once you appoint and approve a city attorney, then I will negotiate the contract with them. So if there are terms and conditions that you want to impose, for example, we talked a lot about whether or not if LGLG was the selection, whether or not we could change the designated primary attorney from Rebecca Dormand to somebody else. So those are the kinds of things that if you want those to be a part of the negotiations, I need to have those made sort of, not necessarily conditions, but instructions to staff for me to go off and negotiate a contract that has terms different from their response to the RFP. Staff doesn't make a recommendation for you. Staff believes that either one of these two law firms could provide you excellent city attorney services. It is a pretty distinct difference. You've got your status quo versus a whole new world of the full-service law firm, and that is primarily a philosophy that the council will have to struggle with, and you'll pick a philosophy when you pick one of these two firms. If you pick Jennifer, you'll stay with the way we've done it. If you pick LGLG, then we'll go into a different direction with a whole new, sort of hermetically sealed law firm. You have three options. I've laid them out for you. If the selection is the Local Government Law Group, I've laid out what the motion is for the mayor and what the motion would be for the council. If the selection is Jennifer Nagel of State in Law, then I've got that. If you are not ready to make a decision, if you'd like more information, then I've got a statement, Mayor, that you would make. And that would conclude the staff report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Wally. After discussion and at least, what, two? Two meetings?
Yeah, two meetings.
Two formal meetings.
Two formal meetings. I'm ready, and I'll ask Brian as council president to do the second part of this. I'm going to hereby appoint the Local Government Law Group as a State and City Attorney conditioned upon reaching an acceptable service contract with a city administrator and conditioned upon the designation of Ross Williamson as a specifically named city attorney. That's my part.
Do you second that, Your Honor?
Okay. And Brian, as council president, has a part here.
I move the council consent to the appointment of the Local Government Law Group as a State and City Attorney conditioned upon reaching an acceptable service contract with a city administrator and conditioned upon the designation of Ross Williamson as a specifically named city attorney.
Okay, there's a motion. And a second? And a second by, by, excuse me.
Mr. Cronk.
Mr. Cronk. I knew that.
Don.
Duh. It's one of those evenings, thank you. Alyssa, would you go ahead and poll the council again on this one?
Sure.
Unless there's discussion, is there any?
We've discussed.
Yeah, we've discussed.
We've discussed this for hours.
We truly have. Alyssa, please.
Councillor Uselman.
Yes.
Councillor Gladwell.
I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay. Councillor Cronquist.
Yes.
Councillor Quigley.
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, three.
Councillor Gladwell abstains.
So we've got, with some conditions, we've got new city attorneys. Good, all right. Let's see, back to you, Mr. Fleishman. What have I got here? Oh. Is that, is that on here? Did I miss it? I thought we did that in.
No, that was in front of the consent agenda.
I thought that was a consent agenda.
I don't believe so.
Did we have that?
To what now?
Was Wade part of the consent agenda?
Yeah, it's already been in tax.
Okay, moving right along. Let's see. Proposed resolution updating fair housing policies. Mr. Fleishman.
Good, thank you. Members of the council, two weeks ago, following a public hearing on the city's community development block grant program, the city council authorized staff to submit an application for a new housing rehabilitation grant to the state's infrastructure financing authority. It has come to our attention that the resolution adopting fair housing program policies in the city that was adopted by the city council about 15 years ago needs to be updated in order to meet the current state and federal requirements for such a policy. If you adopt the policy tonight, and that we have the program in place prior to submitting the application before the end of the month, then our application will receive a few bonus points in the scoring process. So Resolution 970 has been put in place in front of you for consideration that would repeal the Resolution 708 that was adopted about 15 years ago and restate and update the city's fair housing program and policies.
Okay. And your recommendation?
The staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution 970 as presented.
Okay. We're given following options. Approve resolution nine seventy with modifications, or return it to staff for modifications.
Just a weekend.
Or take no action. Lots of possibilities here. What would you folks like to do?
I mean, we accept it as written, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
And there's a motion and a second to approve resolution nine seventy as presented. And, 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 "The issue before the council is consideration of adoption of resolution updating the city's fair housing policies." Okay. Is there any discussion? Uh, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Hearing no opposition, we'll declare the motion passed, four to zero, and resolution nine seventy is adopted. Okay, staff commission reports. Finance department is there before you, and lots of bills paid.
Yeah. Yeah, but why did the number of customers with interrupted services for non-payment jump from thirteen to twenty-nine? It's a three times jump.
That time of the year.
Is it?
Yeah.
The water bill, it's not a heating bill. Water bill doesn't change.
Yeah. I'm not going to start a water panic.
No.
We won't even talk about...
That's okay, we're burning off gas at the moment.
The water...
No smoking at the moment.
The water is still out there. We're good. Okay. And if, Keith, Mr. Campbell, if situation on that contamination in the, in the river, if that changes, would we put it on social media? How do we let the community know about that?
Well, we are, we are still monitoring the situation. I know testing's been done by DEQ Sunday, and then I believe today are, and we have the preliminary results out right now, and, and we are waiting for final word, which we're expecting at some point tomorrow. But we will, we will continue to keep people informed in, in what we know and, and retain a monitor of the situation. I know it's been something that's kept us pretty busy. Police department as well as, as the emergency response management, so Public Works has been, been busy as well, so it's, it's something we're monitoring, keeping track of, and hopefully we'll have more information sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
For those who don't know, a gas tanker tipped over up at milepost fifty-five. Jumping eleven thousand gallons in the river.
Okay. Sergeant Wes, is anything else on finance department? I'm never going to say anything about courtesy, doing one notices. Forget that. Diane, Sergeant Wedsall.
Yes, sir.
Anything on the police report that's notable, or?
We're running about the same. There's a little bit of a, a drop in some areas, but that's due to being down a officer right now, and we're down a couple reserves, so.
Diane, I don't know if we ask this every, every year about this time, but does, the onset of the colder weather, does that, what does that do to police statistics? Do we, we just, we run into more situations that we don't see other times of the year?
Well, usually when the first freezes hit, we run into a little bit more accidents. But outside of that...
SOS, same old stuff, right?
Same old, same stuff.
Okay, different days. All right. Public Works, let's see.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thanks, thank you.
Before you, you have the monthly operating report for November for Public Works. I really don't have anything further to add to that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding that or anything else in Public Works.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That's how was the leaf drop, yard debris drop?
It was fairly successful with the help of the two churches in the city that we collected, I don't know, fifty-six pounds of food for the food bank, hundred fifty-six pounds. And we did our usual two bins of yard debris in both November and December.
Nice, that's my next question. Thanks.
Hey, a personal thanks to those guys that came and picked up all the bags and bags of a, an oak tree that gets bigger every year and then drops more leaves. There's probably some correlation there, but, but that meant bags and bags of leaves that sat out for a while. Got Mr. Pendo's attention. That, that was interesting. But anyway, not garbage, just leaves. Okay. And Mr. Fleishman, Public Works.
You've got my report on the planning and development department.
Planning and development.
Activity for the month of November. I will answer any questions that you have.
Can you touch on that housing rehabilitation grant program from residents of mobile home parks? Can you touch that for a second?
Sure. For the past fifteen years or so, the city has had a housing rehabilitation program that provides low-interest loans to homeowners to fix up their home. There is no payment required until such time as the house is sold or refinanced. Owners of mobile homes who do not own the land that their mobile home sits on have not been eligible to participate in that program. Due to changes in, I think primarily the state program, there are now grants available to assist them, and what the council authorized two weeks ago was submitting an application for a new grant that would provide grants to the owners of mobile homes in primarily mobile home parks. What's noted in my monthly report to you is that last month, in preparation for submitting that application, letters were sent out to all the owners of homes in the three mobile home parks to try to gauge the level of interest and their eligibility, and because we need to have essentially a waiting list of potential applicants when we submit our grant application. So we got about, huh, I think we got about thirty responses back from the hundred and ten or hundred and fifteen letters that went out to, to the owners of units in the three parks.
Okay.
That application will go into the state in the next two weeks. It will be late February or March before we hear whether we're successful or not, and then it'll be late spring or early summer before we're really up and running with a contract and ready to start dispersing that money.
Okay. Neat idea, though. The idea of upgrading our city's housing is always an interesting idea. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One more thing for Mr. Fleishman. Dan, the finalization of the enterprise tax, enterprise zone tax exemption, is that on our website now, or all the details of the tax increment financing, the overlay and all that, is that out there yet, or?
Well, this is not tax increment financing. The enterprise zone is a tax, a property tax exemption.
That's the right in enterprise zone.
That is provided to mostly manufacturing businesses when they make new investments that result in jobs being created.
So that's different than the overlay for downtown?
It is diff, it has nothing to do with downtown.
Okay.
Urban renewal, tax increment financing, totally different.
That's the right in enterprise zone is what this one is.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay. What's left? Library director, November library report. Chris, I didn't properly introduce Jana Mojer, our librarian. I pointed at her and said librarian, but that's not enough, so. But this is, you know, just me. She's got a report this, this evening. Jana, please.
Mayor and council, you have my report on my stats before you. I'd like to, shortly, our foundation's working on getting ticket sales up for our Bruce Biteson Books event, and that will happen on the twenty-seventh of January.
Are tickets available now?
Not quite.
Okay.
That little bits thing, that, that must have been kind of interesting.
It was there. It's a kit that a CCRS library applied for an LSTA grant, and they, are kits that other libraries in the cooperative can ask to borrow and do hands-on tech with kids. And we had a great turnout. It was, it was really great.
Most of it, okay.
It's very interesting. They built little cars that move on their own.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Jana.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, what else have we got? Presentations, comments from the public, last time this evening. If not, business from the city administrator. Oh, does somebody, I see a hand waving around there.
No.
No?
No.
Business from the city administrator, teen center, informational.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do just have an informational piece. I see a couple of the individuals who've been working in this back in the audience as well. Just let the, the governing body and, and the city know, the city is currently finalizing a memo of understanding with New Growth Ministries as they look to finish to put together an organization that'll operate a teen center. An ADA inspection has been planned. The MOU will give us a six-month window for New Growth to complete their formation. New Growth is aware that Mill Creek Park planning could mean that the building will no longer exist in the future. If, to when the agreement is finalized, it will come before the governing body to be adopted or approved. And a couple of key points, the teen center will be operated by a faith-based organization but will not serve the purpose of promulgating religious doctrine. The lease will be for nominal fee. New Growth will maintain the inside of the building, the city will maintain the outside of, of the area, and the city can void the lease with a thirty-day notice. So, just wanted to give an update. I know there's been some interest, and we'll work on that, and we should have that MOU finalized, and hopefully we'll bring that forward to the council at an, at an upcoming council meeting. Also, just while I'm here, I think it's been mentioned, but we've canceled the January second city council meeting, so wish everyone happy holidays and a, and a happy new year.
Thank you. Was, there, you didn't anticipate anything else about that teen center coming up this evening, did you?
No, it's just an informational.
Okay, all right, thank you. Business from the council, anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question for Keith. What's the latest with the chemical balance in the pool? Has it been resolved?
The issue was resolved. It took several days. The contractor who, who, who had that issue helped work with the city to, to address that and is working with the city to address our losses during that time, so, yeah, once the mistake was made, they were very quick to try to work to remedy it. Unfortunately, it's a, a complicated process that the wrong chemical was put in the pool, which stripped it of all its chlorine. So, to get chlorine back in the pool took multiple days before it was, again, safe to, to operate. The day the pool opened, I'm trying to remember what day that was, last Tuesday or Wednesday, it went down and everything seemed to be fine, and the, the water temperature was good, so.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Anything else under business from the council? Okay, future agenda items, January sixteenth, twenty eighteen. Swearing in of a new council member, Christopher Mullen, code amendment, public hearing, rental licensing, a municipal judge contract, and vertical housing development zone. And unless there's anything else?
When is our next meeting?
Sixteenth? January eighteenth.
January eighteenth is the next meeting.
Yeah, so we're about a month, about a month out. We'll, let's hope that the, the hope and promise of the season is with all of you.
January sixteenth, Mr. Mayor.
Next January. Have a wonderful holiday season, and we'll see you in almost a month. We're done for tonight.